Good morning, good morning. Anyone that has a seat, please take your seat so that we can begin work for today. It is Tuesday, July 1st. Madam Clerk, we do have a quorum. Could you please call the roll?
Bloomingville, Bonin, Buscaino, Cidio, Englander, Fuentes, Weeza, Caress, Corrion, LeBlanche, Martinez, O'Farrell, Parks, Price, Wesson, ten members present in the quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Bonin moves. Price seconds, next.
Committator resolutions for approval.
Englander moves. And Martinez seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, today is Tuesday, and now be the time for the flag salute.
Okay, if we could all rise for the flag salute will be led today by Mr. Buscaino.
Right hand over your heart, please remove all hats. Eyes on the flag, ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Buscaino. Let's prepare to go through the... Madam Clerk, let's make sure we go through the agenda quickly.
Items 1 through 4 are items which, items noted for public hearing. The Department of Building and Safety reports that items 1B and C may be received and filed inasmuch as the properties or owner occupied dwellings.
Okay, so without objection, that'll be the order. Do we have cards?
Cards on item 1.
Let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That brings us where?
Items 5 through 38 are items which public hearings have been held.
Specials, members, specials. Items 5 through 38. Mr. Parks.
Special on 8, and find out if there's a committee report forthcoming.
So let's hold 8. And someone, please be prepared to answer Mr. Parks's question. Members, any other specials? Let's prepare to vote.
Excuse me, Mr. President. For items 8, 9, 10, and 11, there was not a quorum and committee, so a public hearing needs to be provided for those items. There are cards on items 8 and 11.
Okay, well, we'll hold those. Let's hold 5 as well. Let us prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
And for the ordinances, items 9 and 10, those will be held over to January to July 29th unless reconsidered with 12 members.
Thank you. Let's move on.
Items 39 through 61 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Which items do we have cards on?
Cards on items 40, 47, 48, 49, 52, 53, 55, 56, 57, and 58.
Okay, let's hold those items. Mr. O'Farrell.
Item 40, special, please.
Hold 40? Hold 40? Did you...I think we want to hold 39. Madam Clerk, there's a card on that, I've been informed. So let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
I have a request to...well, let's complete the agenda. Is that it?
Items on the supplemental agenda, item 62 is an item for which public hearing has been held.
Specials? Do not see any. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
And item 62 is an ordinance which will be held over to July 29th unless reconsidered with 12 members.
Okay. So, uh...let's move on.
Items 63 through 69 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Okay, let's...those items are now before us, if there are no objections. Cards?
No cards.
Okay. We're gonna hold item 65. Let's prepare to vote on the...Mr. Parks?
Let's hold 64, get some questions from Housing.
Item 64, let's hold that for Mr. Parks. Let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
And now, yes?
For item 63, which is an ordinance, it'll be held over to July 29th unless reconsidered with 12 members.
Okay, so we want to vote on reconsideration on item 14. Let's...now we're voting on reconsideration. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, let's hold this for a bit. 67, forthwith.
And also, Mr. President, there's a request to send items 31, 33, and 51 forthwith.
Without objection. Mr. O'Farrell.
Mr. President, please add item 37 forthwith as well.
Okay, items 37 forthwith. Okay, now we're gonna move to...we have a couple of presentations today, so I want to turn things over to Mr. Englander. Mr. Englander.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. This is pretty cool. And, uh, thank you Herman, I can hear him clapping in the background. Always applauding. This is a, this is a cool thing that EMD put out there called "Home as Your Kit." And they had this video contest that they took citywide, and we got hundreds of submissions. And the whole idea today, well, we have the winners, and you'll see the video. Los Angeles Emergency Management Department came up with this idea of a contest, and it was sponsored by Los Angeles Emergency Preparedness Foundation as well as SOS Survival Products. So we should plug SOS Survival Products. Go ahead and go to their website and get prepared. Great company that has awesome stuff. But the winning video will be used now to promote preparedness on social media. And so we've actually already uploaded it to our YouTube. It's going out on our e-blast on Friday. We're urging the rest of the council members to put a link to it as well on their newsletters, and you'll see it in a moment. This was open to individuals or teams of up to four people, and the challenge was to create a video that demonstrated the use of common household objects and tools in an emergency, in a disaster situation. So the rule was this, the video could be no longer than 1 minute and 30 seconds, and you had to use items that were contained and found in at least two rooms in your home. So those were the rules. It did not mean items directly from an emergency survival kit. So SOS Survival Products was exempt from the video but supporting the idea. Contestants had to find resources throughout their living room environment that could be transformed into a survival tool. And the goal was to show that you can exercise emergency preparedness through being resourceful and using your home as your kit. EMD, under the leadership of Anna Burton, received hundreds of videos, all of which had excellent ideas. So, let's check out the winning video. This was produced by Quinn, Sienna, Emma, and Julia, who's here with me today. So go ahead and roll the video.
Hello, City of Los Angeles! Welcome to Emergency the Game Show. I'm your host, Julia Woods. Today our contestants are Emma and Shawna, two local college students. Today they'll be battling it out to see who's the most prepared in emergency situations using nothing but common household items. We have 10 items: hand sanitizer, credit card, scarf, sanitary napkin, pen, wooden spoon, blanket, bottled water, ruler, and tape. Let's get started. Our first situation is a broken arm. Fashion is split with these items. Good luck! Congratulations, Shawna! A ruler and tape is great to temporarily split an arm. Next question, there's a fire in your building. How do you exit safely? Run out as fast as you can. Post scarf over your face, feel the door for heat, and crawl out to the fire exit. Fabric will help to filter the smoke. And always remember to feel the door with the back of your hand. Next situation, you scrape your arm but have no ointment. What do you do? Hand sanitizer! Wrong! Hand sanitizer's too harsh on the wound. Flush the wound with clean water, and then cover with an item such as a sanitary pad or a diaper. It's a dead tie, which means it's time for the... Emergency lightning rod! You're cooking a quesadilla using plenty of oil, and it catches on fire. How do you put out the fire? Pour water on it! Smother with a blanket! Right you are, Emma. Never pour water on an oil fire, it'll only make it worse. Congratulations, Emma! You are the winner of a lifetime supply of ramen noodles and a confetti shower! We'll see you next time on Emergency the Game Show!
That is awesome. I'm gonna ask Julia to say a few words as well. I think you've got enough passion for all of us, so you're not shy.
I drank a lot of coffee before we made that. Well, on behalf of the team, Quinn, Shawna, and Emma, we'd like to say thank you to Councilmember Englander and the Emergency Management Department, and special shout-out to Mike Bonin, of course, who represents our district. Um, yeah, it was just a really cool lesson for us, demonstrating that emergency preparedness is inexpensive and fun. So, thank you very much.
Awesome. Thank you, thank you. And Anna, if I could have you say a few words as well?
Thank you. This was a really good opportunity for us to reach out in the community and start looking at how we can work with the different community and teams to, to look at home preparedness, and as we're working now, and to make sure that we are, our communities and individuals are more resilient. So I think this was a fun opportunity, something we can share and something we're built upon in the future.
All right, thank you so much. And so on behalf of all of us...
Mr. Englander, I do have a member on the queue, Mr. Bonin?
Fantastic.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Julia gave a shout-out to me, so I wanted to return the favor. I am not at all surprised to see Julia standing there. I was a little surprised to see some of the stuff in the, in the video. Julia has interned for me in the past. She worked on my campaign, student at LMU, one of the best and the brightest of a generation that's gonna lead this city. I was just impressed to see that your range of talents is even broader than I had thought. So, thank you and congratulations.
Mitchell, back to you.
Thank you. So not only do the winners get certificates from all of us, Julia Woods, resolutions, and Brian, runner-up, Brian Lamb. Congratulations, let's give him a round of applause, but they also...this is like, this is like Ginsu knives, but wait, there's more. They also receive a mini iPad courtesy of the foundation. So they will each get one of these as well. So let's give him a round of applause, and we'll see him on YouTube. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Oh, we got another family that's here. Wait, but wait, there's more.
An honorable mention?
Oh, we've got an honor... We've got, oh, this is cool also. Each team member will receive a $25 SOS Survival Product gift card. And we've got another family, Team 1, the Yates. It's gonna be Christopher, and Caitlin, and Haley. Team 2 was Brian Lamb. Team 3 was Powee Wee. And Team 4, Miranda, Medgar, Lon, and Sanj. Let's give them all a round of applause, they're all here. They've did a phenomenal job on behalf of all the residents to try to protect us, and have fun showing what you can do at home with simple household products. It's fantastic, thank you so much. All right. Let's come, we're gonna go in the back and take some photos, so come on back.
Anyway, congratulations, that was well done. Let's vote on reconsideration quickly before we go to our next presentation. We have items that I discussed with you, Madam Clerk. What are those items?
Items 9, 10, 62, and 63.
Okay, so the first vote is to reconsider those items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Mr. Bonin?
Mr. President, as we're doing that, I'd like to move to reconsider item number 6 from Friday's council agenda.
Let's, let me get through this, and then we'll come back to you.
Okay.
So now let's actually vote on the items. So this is, uh, we'll open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, Mr. Bonin?
Now I'd like to move, we reconsider item 6 from Friday's council agenda. Council file 12-1880-S2 relative to the SoCal Gas franchise extension ordinance.
Um, Madam Clerk? One second, we're... Is our equipment in order? Okay, so now let's vote on reconsideration. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay. And you just wanna hold that, Mr. Bonin?
Uh, no, now I'd like to ask for unanimous vote and send this forthwith.
Okay, so now we will actually vote on it. Let's open the roll. Let's, uh, close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Forthwith, please.
Forthwith. Okay, everything forthwith. Mr. Parks? Are you prepared to move forward with your presentation?
We're ready.
Mr. Parks, the floor is yours.
Colleagues, today we're here to honor and welcome Nolan Rollins to the City of Los Angeles as our newest executive director of the Los Angeles Urban League. Nolan has been successful within the Urban League movement. In fact, they say he lives and breathes the league seven days a week. For over 10 years of his professional tenure, he was the executive vice president and COO of the Greater Baltimore Urban League, and in that capacity directed and implemented all economic development strategies which allowed that league office to be positioned for over $3 billion in community development projects. Also, as the president, CEO of the Urban League in New Orleans, he turned around the affiliate during a time when the city was recovering from Katrina. Their efforts, through his efforts, his team and the New Orleans affiliate became financially stable and strategically leveraged a diverse stream of funding with partnerships and social services organizations in the city. He is recognized as one of the top leaders in New Orleans and was a key advisor to the mayor in 2010 as the mayor selected a new chief of police. And also, he appointed him on the airport board where he served as the nation's youngest chairperson of a airport authority. During his tenure as chairman, Nolan was responsible for turning around the airport's internal operation and also included over $300 million of Super Bowl renovations. His due diligence was necessary for the mayor's decision to build a new airport through his chairmanship, the Board Construction Committee. So he remodeled and remade the city of New Orleans while there. During his tenure as the head of the New Orleans affiliate, he was a strong and vocal advocate for the underserved communities and disadvantaged individuals. He has aggressively fought for the seat at the table and to be a voice for the voiceless. Nolan is strategic and diplomatic in his approach to the community development and sees his role as a key collaborator who is willing and able to work with various groups, organizations, to improve the lives and opportunities of his constituents. And today, it's a great pleasure to congratulate him and welcome him to the City of LA as the seventh president and chief executive officer of the LA Urban League. Roland? We'd like to present this certificate behalf of the LA City Council, congratulate you on your prior success, and really give you this in advance of all your future success. Thank you so much.
Let me first just thank you, Councilmember Parks, for this honor, and also thank you, Mr. President, and also Councilmember Price for your support over the time that I've been here, and simply say this to you, that on the heels of the enactment of the Civil Rights Act, we have an opportunity here in Los Angeles to create something that the world is waiting for. We have the opportunity to look at humanity very differently than we have in the past. We have the opportunity to make sure that by virtue of where you were born, that you are a complete citizen of these United States. We have the opportunity to make sure that the civil rights movement isn't something that is a static document, that the civil rights legislation isn't something that's a static movement, but that it's a movement for our children and our children's children to make sure that equality is something that stands for all. And I would simply say to you that on this occasion, that the Los Angeles Urban League is going to double down its efforts in economic development, we are going to double down our efforts in early childhood development, we are going to double down our efforts in workforce development, we are going to double down our efforts in making sure that our community, this Los Angeles, is stronger than it's ever been because the needs are greater than they've ever been before. So, I would like to thank you for welcoming us here. I would like to thank you for the way that you have opened your arms to our leadership at the Los Angeles Urban League, but most importantly, I would like to thank you for the partnership that we are going to have, a long-lasting partnership, because it's going to be a partnership in progress, in progress of the people, for the people, with the people, and because of the people. Thank you.
Thank you. And it's good to see you again. I don't know if you owe me breakfast or I owe you breakfast, but I look forward to us getting together again.
I would certainly also like to introduce Adrian Sears, who works in our office.
Who needs no introduction to some of us? Let's give Adrian a round of applause. Okay, let's prepare to vote on item 14. Madam Clerk, can we open the roll? Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
We'll quickly move to, uh, item 11. Called special by cards. William Ernest, I can't make out the last name. Please come forward, sir, and identify yourself.
My name's, my name's William Schonawerk. I'm opposed to this item because I'm afraid the price of the solar is so low the producers will go bankrupt. In Germany, 1/5 of all the wind farms are bankrupt.
Okay, let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
We'll go to item 39. Mr. Walsh, item 39. John Walsh, item 39.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. For, just for identification purposes, a proud resident of Los Angeles since nineteen seventy-six and never once was my trash not picked up on time, never once.
Stay on the subject, stay on the subject. No applause, please don't humor him. Go ahead, Mr. Walsh.
This concerns the appointment of Mrs. Catherine, I can't pronounce her last name, Quality and Productive Commission, we're one hundred percent in favor of it. We've checked her out, she has no record of owning kiddie porn as one of your former members that you voted on had. And number one is that she had, the mayor made her write a letter and sign it of resignation without a date. The black mayor never did that, the Mexican mayor never did that, the Jewish mayor does it, HollywoodHighlands.org.
No, no, no applause, no, please, no applause. Let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, I'm going to be jumping back and forth from items to general public comment, so I would like to call a few people up from the audience, Mr. Bob Schoonover and Reverend Smart, please come forward. Please. Go right ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to start off by introducing my Vice President, Lynda Dent. I'm here today to thank the residents for standing shoulder to shoulder with city workers, evidence that good jobs and quality city services are the foundation of a strong community. Together, we brought our concerns to the City Council, about three hundred million the city spends on Wall Street fees annually, and the additional two hundred million we spend on average each year picking up the tab for the bank's foreclosure mess. And the untold millions of revenue we don't collect because rich corporations are rigging the tax system. Yesterday, the Budget and Finance Committee heard us and voted unanimously to renegotiate the toxic Mellon Bank-New York deal or terminate it altogether. We marched here from the bank at Bunker Hill, Wall Street West, and we're here today to thank Chairman Kokorian, the sponsor, Paul Coretts, Councilmembers Blumenfield, Englander, and Bonin for their leadership in this matter. We asked the full City Council and the mayor to work with us to be the first nation to choose to fix our streets, not fund Wall Street. We ask our city to embrace the vision of a model employer that values strong public sector that boosts quality public services. We are bargaining to fix L.A. together so we can make Los Angeles a better place to live and work for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's keep it down, please. No applause. Okay, after Reverend Smart, do we have Anna Garcia? Reverend, go right ahead.
Greetings, distinguished members of the City Council. I'm Pastor William Smart, President and CEO of the Southern Christian Leadership Conference. And as we are in celebration of the fiftieth anniversary of the voting of the Civil Rights Act, it's very important that we're in solidarity with the community and workers as we be moved forward. We appreciate what has happened yesterday, but we are concerned as a community that we may, that we are more concerned about families than bank fees. We're more concerned, we're more concerned about interest in families and interest in the banks. And so we want to move forward as a city to ensure that the workers are taken care of so that the community could be taken care of. We want to make sure that the, all the services that are being cut can be reinstated when we get these money back from these banks and redo the deals. You know, it's, it's very important as we move forward that the employee base that we're looking at, seventy percent of it is people of color. African Americans, Latinos, Asian and Pacific Islanders are workers of your city. Every day they go to work, they give a good day's work and service to you and the community. We want to make sure that they are given the opportunities, they're given the benefits, they're given the interests that they need to value.
Please, no applause.
To raise their families, to send their kids to college, to every day they can be a viable member of our community. So as we move together and we look at these deals that these banks have done, we make sure that we negotiate with our workers fairly and successfully so that they can again stand with honor and dignity because that's what our city is about, that's what the Civil Rights Act was about, and that's what I know this City Council is about. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. All right, let's hold the applause. Ms. Garcia, please, hold the applause, you're going to take away from your time to speak. Ms. Garcia.
Hi, good morning. My name's Anna Garcia. I'm here today on behalf of the Central American Resource Center. Cadesen is the largest Central American organization in the country, and we've been part of the Westlake Pico Union Community for over thirty-one years. Cadesen's here today as a member of the Fix L.A. Coalition because we strongly believe that our communities are served the best that Los Angeles has to offer. We know that the first steps to make this happen are by restoring services and reinvesting in our communities. In the past two weeks, something extraordinary happened. We went out the old-fashioned way. We talked to our neighbors and coworkers, and we collected signatures. Our member organizations joined together and took a tour of the alleyways and wats, which have not been cleaned because of slashed services. Power went into the Latino housing projects in the west side and in Pacoima. The National Action Network went into South L.A. churches, and this weekend, we were at South Temple Baptist in South L.A. All of these communities have been impacted by the prolonged service cuts, and we have the possibility to restore services to pre-recession levels if we made Wall Street pay their fair share. Today, I am proud to present to you over forty-three hundred hand-collected and signed petitions for the record. These petitions are the voices of our communities who want a public inquiry into Wall Street dealings. This is only the beginning of our drive. We will continue our efforts on the streets, and we will take our efforts online. Our power is in the grassroots, and we want our voices heard. Thank you.
Thank you, okay. Now we're gonna, now we're gonna move back to Agenda Item Forty-nine. Donna Peirman, are you here? Donna, please come forward, you have a card on Item Forty-nine. Go ahead, Donna.
Okay, here we go. Oh yeah, here we are. Okay, yeah, here we go. This is for the Inclusion and Miracle Mile Fund Run, but I want to say, let's encourage business in different areas to fund these programs. And then, well, after, when they do this, they'll get recognition, and people will like them, and they'll get more business. We don't really need to have the city paying for everything. I really think that businesses around the area can fund these things and be a win-win situation, and we can then use that money to fix our streets. We need our sidewalks and our, and our streets fixed, and we can use that money. So the principle is good, but I really think that businesses around the area would be better to be paying for these things and then getting recognition, and then they'll bring business back to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
If I could get Eva Espinoza and Brother Wright to come forward. And Cheryl Parisi after this. Go right ahead.
Thank you. Good morning, members of the City Council, coworkers, and fellow city employees. My name is Eva Espinoza, and I have been a 911 operator for twenty years. I have been under receiving end of thousands of calls where residents are urgently and desperately reaching out for help, so seconds can literally make a difference between life and death. The sooner we're able to take a call and dispatch help, the more likely we have to for a good outcome. I love my work, I take pride in knowing that my work saves lives. That's what makes it so personally painful for me to see what's happened as a result of the budget cuts. The elimination of over two hundred positions in Communications Division plus currently a vacancy factor of seventy-four PSRs, 911 dispatchers, means that there are fewer people able to answer calls, which means residents are waiting minutes, not seconds, to get police help or medical attention. I also work the Spanish line. The Spanish-speaking community is further negatively impacted because the 911 overflow is routed to the Spanish lines and given priority to the Spanish-speaking caller who is already on hold. We are coming into summer a very busy time of the year with less than adequate staffing level. The residents in the community have suffered in the wake of the crash of the economy. It's time to turn the tables and put the residents before the banks that caused the crash in the first place. Hold the line on the bank fees and use the resources to restore services. This is a matter of public safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, if we keep it down. Some Boa Wright, Cheryl Parisi.
Good morning.
Hey, man, good to see you again.
Good to see you. First off, I'd like to thank each and every one of you for stepping up to being city leaders in the second-largest city in the nation, okay? That's a big job, but we need you guys to work with Fixed Los Angeles and help us continue, help city employees like myself continue to serve the taxpayers, the utility payers, the citizens of Los Angeles. We're faced with, they say it's a budget deficit in the general fund, well, we have a solution here. We got all these blighted homes that it was an ordinance a few years ago that this City Council voted on, it's not enforced. We're asking you guys just to simply enforce the ordinance to continue the services that we provide to city citizens and visitors of Los Angeles. So it takes every leader, every leader in here, every leader in here, hello, hello? Every leader in here to do this, because this is our city. It's very important. We're asking you to stand with us and Fix Los Angeles with the community, the city employees, and the business owners. Thank you.
Morning.
Good morning. I'm Cheryl Parisi, Chair of the Coalition of L.A. City Unions, and twenty-two thousand workers stand together with the Fix L.A. Coalition. Would all of you stand, please? Will the Fix L.A. Coalition stand? We are here today as one to offer a partnership with our city leaders. We are bargaining to fix Los Angeles, and what that means is a restoration of services. Our members work every day to improve the quality of life in our communities. Yet, we are hamstrung. Five thousand workers have been cut, and that means a diminution in the quality of life and the level of service that we're able to provide. We understand that there is no division between public workers and the quality of life in our community. In fact, we are inextricably linked. As we raise the quality of life and create job opportunities, reach out to communities, let's create a new career civil service. Let's create opportunities in our communities so that workers can be uplifted and be trained and be given the opportunity to serve. We're here today to ask that you support our vision. Thank you.
Henry Gamble, followed by Doris Weston, or Dennis Weston, I'm trying to read the writing, apologize.
Good morning, I'm Henry Gamble. I live and work in District Eleven. I am a librarian, and as a librarian, I don't think it's right that we're giving away three hundred million dollars to Wall Street while I don't have a children's librarian for seven months. I don't think it's right either. I don't think it's right that the mayor has a plan to gradually reduce the business tax so that hopefully some nice jobs will trickle down. Well, I don't have a teen librarian in many of our libraries, and we fight every day just to stay open even though we passed Measure L. And as a parent, as a parent to a one-and-a-half-year-old, I don't think it's right that my closest park has rundown facilities and not enough programs for my kid, because if my kid doesn't have those opportunities, that means that middle-class kids and poor kids in our city, which is supposed to be a city for everyone, doesn't have those same opportunities. It is time. We're done with this austerity. It's not working. It's time to invest in your people. Fix L.A. Because right now, we're here to fix L.A. in this room, but right now, L.A. feels a little bit fixed, and it's for the robber barons and Wall Street and the wealthy CEO, and we're tired of it. It's time to do the right thing. Thank you.
We're actually, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask that we, we try to keep the applause down if we could, so we don't lose control of the chambers. Is it Doris Weston?
Good morning, my name is Doris Weston. Good morning, my name is Doris Weston. I became a crossing guard twenty-eight years ago. I take great pride in the work that I do as a member of the City Public Safety Team, ensuring that the children and their parents get to school safely every day. And you should know, this is a job that comes from significant risk. Crossing guards have been hit by cars, and every year, we had many near misses. Our work is crucial to the safety of the Angelenos. We cannot allow budget cuts to put families in harm's way. Council members, just one percent of three million in the city pays us fees to Wall Street. We pay for a crossing guard at each elementary school and middle school. This is a crucial step to help avoid ceaseless tragedies like the one that occurred earlier this year, where a mother lost her life in an uncrossed, unguarded crosswalk. It's time to hold the bank accountable for crashing our economy and for the unchecked greed that robbed our city of necessary needs. Our coalition is called on our city leaders to do right things to make sure that kids are protected. Lately, effectively today, lastly, effectively today, the city has stopped paying, or should I say, cut crossing guards' pay due to a claim of a sunset clause. I urge you to look into this and help us the lowest-paid workers in the City of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Right, no, thank you. Is it Doris? Okay, I've got Doris Weston. Martha Sanchez, I believe is our Martha Sanchez, I believe is our last speaker. We do have additional, just to let you know, additional other non-related, if you will, public comment cards. We'll continue public comment later on in the agenda, but we'll complete this round.
Good morning, council members. My name is Martha Sanchez. I'm a member of ACE and a member of Fix L.A. Coalition, and I would like to close our remarks from today. We are in a crisis. I know that we need money, and the money is there. We are only urging you to take the correct actions and take the leadership that we need in Los Angeles to move this forward. We need services, and now that I'm handicapped, I need it more than ever. Because I don't want to stop in bed waiting for people to fix the problems in my community. I want to be able to walk in a fixed street, in a very well-fixed street, so I can keep moving and fixing by myself and keeping my community moving on. So please, take the leadership that we need and took the correct actions that we need today. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Okay, that concludes that portion, if you will, of general public comment. We've got, we'll continue the second half of general public comment later on in the agenda. So I want to thank you again for coming here this morning and filling those out. So going on to the agenda items now. We'll go ahead and take item five. Madam Clerk? Let's give it a minute for those folks who are leaving council chambers. Okay, I'll go ahead and turn the floor over to Councilmember Bonin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, good morning. This is a very big day and a very good day for the city of Los Angeles. I am pleased to introduce to you today Ms. Celita Reynolds, the mayor's nominee to be the new general manager for the Department of Transportation. I've had the great opportunity to spend some time with Celita, both before she was selected by the mayor and since then. And I am eager to see her bring her passion and her vision and her experience here to the city of Los Angeles. I think we are going to get a fresh way of thinking about pedestrian and vehicular safety. I think we're going to get a fresh way of thinking about how to move people around Los Angeles and to revitalize our neighborhoods. And I think we're going to get a fresh way of thinking about how we look at the impacts, the traffic impacts of development. Celita, thank you for your willingness to serve the city of Los Angeles. I know you've had an opportunity to meet most of my colleagues. I'd like to give you an opportunity to make an opening statement and tell us a little bit about who you are and what you hope to do as our general manager.
Sure. Thank you, Councilmember Bonin, and thank you, council members, for the great honor to come before you today as Mayor Garcetti's appointment to lead the Los Angeles Department of Transportation. It is a great honor and a great responsibility to serve the mayor, to serve you, to partner with folks in your communities, to work on something that touches the lives of everyone in this city, our streets. Great streets should be safe. They should be, they should set the table for people to be able to age in place. They should be magnets to build community, to build neighborhoods, and to draw the best and the brightest to the city of Los Angeles. And the way to get there is through partnering with you all, with strong community organizations, and with the other agencies in the city, and to make the DOT a great place to work. There is a great leadership team at the DOT, and they are really the face of the city. They interact with residents of this city as much or more as anybody else. And what they bring to that interaction is really the way we want to put our best foot forward. And that begins and ends with feeling like they have a great place to work, where they're supported, they get the resources they need, and where their work is valued and validated. And those are the things that I think are most important, and I'm happy to take any questions that you have.
I'll start off with a question. Is there a way to make our streets safer for our residents and also move people from point A to point B?
So first and foremost, when I go out and I ask people what's important about their streets, they want them to be well-organized. A well-organized street is a safe street, where you know where everyone should be, where you can predict what everybody is going to do, and where everybody is sort of collaborating to get along well. One of the single biggest predictors of the severity of a crash is how fast a person was driving when the crash occurs. So we want people to be able to have a predictable trip, a trip where they know how long it's going to take them to get from point A to point B, but we want them to do that at human speed, so that when people make mistakes, we have a system that forgives, so that those mistakes don't result in death.
Thank you. Colleagues, I'm pretty stoked about this nomination, and I ask for an I-vote.
Thank you.
Great. Mr. Parks.
Thank you very much. Good morning.
Good morning.
I just want to just make a comment. Having mentioned these questions at the committee, and I wish you will, but I just have had a very difficult time trying to correlate your consulting and your experience in San Francisco as relates to taking over and managing and leading 1,800 people and the wide assortment of things that transportation does. And so I just kind of, if the mayor's appointed you, that's his selection, but I would just don't kind of pull all those pieces together. Maybe you could help me and show how it connects to the kinds of things that we'd expect. Transportation, I know you're big on bicycles and dealing with things that slow traffic down, but we also have, I would guess, three or four major budgets that are in that department with Prop A, Prop C, Measure R, Special Parking Revenue Fund. All those things are part of running that operation along with 1,800 people, who, about 100 of them showed up here maybe a couple of months ago saying they were demoralized and a few other things. But maybe you can kind of connect the dots, because I just have had some difficulty in looking at your resume and seeing how it correlates to this overwhelming job.
Sure. Thank you for the question. So, and I think it was 250 of them that showed up here. And thinking about that a lot, as I've considered whether or not to take on this opportunity and this challenge. And that's the thing about it that attracts me the most. One of the first things I'm really interested in doing is hearing from all those folks who showed up here that day and everyone at the department, to hear from them about how they think the department could run better. I'm interested in seeing, you know, I sort of create and manage a budget of close to $200 million for, across the four programs that we work on in San Francisco, and almost a majority of that comes from grant funds and funding sources that are not part of the agency's operating budget. So a large part of what I do is balance the policy goals of the city with a severe lack of funding and a very fragmented funding picture. And as somebody who has worked in active transportation almost my whole career, I've hardly ever worked in a place where those programs were well-funded. So being thoughtful and creative and managing every dime and stretching it as far as we possibly can to deliver the promises that our policy documents make is my job. And I think that is very comparable to what the department is going to be asked to do. Livable Streets also has a crossing guard program. Sustainable Streets has parking control officers. We manage the signals in the city. In many ways, the MTA is almost, the Sustainable Streets Division is almost exactly like the DOT, in that we are the face of transportation, we are responsible for delivering on transportation, but we often find ourselves in a position of needing to be creative with our budgets and not actually having control and influence over things like the freeway. My consulting background is relevant because I managed a firm as it was on its way up, as it was growing, and I managed a firm through the worst sort of recession that we've sort of lived through. So having to make tough decisions, having to have those kinds of conversations with staff that you don't want to have, but treating people with respect and allowing them to keep their integrity through those really rough times is something that I learned a lot about and did a lot of. You know, San Francisco has a daytime population of about 1.2 million people in a seven-by-seven mile box. So the transportation challenges are immense, and, you know, that's something that I've spent a lot of time thinking about and delivering on. And I have to say, you know, it's, it is not, it is not, I am accountable for everything that happens at the department, but the strong leadership team there already and the talented folks who have been making it work at the DOT are really the heroes and the ones that are going to lead the city forward. And so my approach is really to be as collaborative as possible and to have their success, shine a light on their success and their leadership.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Mr. Buscayeno.
Thank you, Mr. President. For members of the public watching, listening, I had an opportunity to review your resume and the outstanding work you've done in San Francisco. But for those listening and watching, tell us a little bit about your experience in San Francisco, how it prepared yourself to lead our department here in Los Angeles.
Sure. So I started my career actually at the city of Oakland, across the bay. And my first summer there, I was the bike parking intern. And I have to say that it was love at first sight. When I really found what it was like to be in a team at a public works agency and see projects come to life on the street and work with communities and businesses on those challenges, that's something that really became the North Star of my career. And I spent about a decade in a consulting firm, a traffic engineering, transportation planning firm. And then for the last few years, I've been in San Francisco at the Municipal Transportation Agency. And what I have done there is really lead the part of our organization that focuses on bringing the city's transit-first policy to life and in building a sort of program of projects to deliver on the promise of getting to zero traffic deaths by 2024. It's a policy called Vision Zero. It started in Sweden in the 90s, and now New York and Chicago and San Francisco have taken on that challenge as well. And that is really, you know, that required everybody in the city, all the agencies that touch the streets, including public health, our partners at the Police Department, at the Fire Department, to come together and agree that safety was really going to be our guiding light. And that put together, my role was to put together a program of projects that would reduce those injuries and fatalities that are so deeply harmful to our community.
So remember, of traffic calming measures that you oversaw.
So we have a residential traffic calming program as well, which I worked on realigning so that we could deliver faster to those residents who, for whom speeding impacts their quality of life. But really, the Vision Zero projects are not rocket science. They're about focused improvements at intersections, making it so that people walking and people driving can clearly see one another, making sure that drivers slow down as they turn left or turn right, because that's where the most severe and frequent crashes happen. And these are not bleeding-edge things. And, you know, the city of Los Angeles has made an incredible investment in the ATSAK system and is really on the leading edge of signal technology. And that is really where we can get a lot of early return on very minimal investment in making the streets safer.
And finally, Ms. Reynolds, Los Angeles has the largest street network, network of streets in this country. And unfortunately, a third of our streets are in failed condition. You mentioned to me last week when we met, the pavement program that you oversaw in San Francisco, can you explain to us? And I was impressed by what's been done up north, and something I think the Department of Transportation should take the lead on here in working with street services. Explain to us the program and how you plan on implementing it here in Los Angeles.
So the voters in San Francisco in 2011 passed a general obligation streets bond, which included our pavement condition index, PCI, is one of the worst in the country. And really focusing on fixing that for the people that drive is integral. But included as part of that bond was a small allocation for us to do something we call "follow the paving," which means that when you've got a street that's being torn up, you put it back better than you found it. And so you go in and for a very nominal cost, you can change the striping, you can even make adjustments to the curb line, and the sort of return on investment there is just tremendous, because it's a lot less expensive to do that when you're already out there resurfacing than it is to come in five years later and try and start up a new project. But that required us to get on the same page with our Department of Public Works, to anticipate where the paving was going to occur, and to collaborate and coordinate in talking to communities about what they wanted to see on that street after it was done. And so those are, you know, painting, restriping a street after it's being resurfaced is the equivalent of a free lunch in transportation, especially for active transportation. And so that program really incentivized us to partner and collaborate, and we've been able to see tremendous results.
Thank you.
Couldn't hold our applause out there if we could. Mr. Fuentes.
Thank you, Mr. Englander, and welcome to Los Angeles. You know, I've got the same sort of, I think, thoughts that Mr. Parks does in terms of sort of the challenges that are facing anybody, irrespective of who the candidate is, to the city of Los Angeles, four times the size of San Francisco, 460 square miles of city of Los Angeles, to Mr. Buscayeno's point, you know, a tremendous network of streets. And so my question really for you is sort of, how will you define success in your first three and five years in the city of Los Angeles? I, like Mr. Bonin, I think I'm particularly excited about your last assignment. I think it gives you, I hope, the opportunity to share with us your perspective on how it is that we complete our investment to the public. Streets aren't just thoroughfares for vehicles. They are space that should be celebrated by everybody. And I think, you know, transporting a vehicle or a pedestrian to me should have the same sort of balance and thinking. And understanding what you did recently is very, very exciting. But how do you then, understanding that we have very limited resources, how do you then apply some of these ideas and opportunities to Los Angeles? So would love to hear what your sense of success looks like in Los Angeles. And again, understand that the resources are very, very stretched. San Francisco enjoys a higher vehicle license fee as a result of some of the legislators that have served that part of the state of California. You enjoy, I think, an awareness and ability to sort of capital a little bit in a more nimble sense than other parts of California. We struggle with all of that, and so we, the expectation is that you're going to stretch the resources, pinch every penny. I think that is sort of a requisite of the job. But how will you tier your success? What is it that you will be looking for in the first couple of years, and what can we expect?
So thank you for the question. I would say that, you know, and I've said this a few times along the way, that, you know, one of the first things I mentioned earlier that I'd like to do is hear from employees and through, you know, and set the things that they think are not working as a benchmark. I want to see employee morale and those things improve. I think that our success begins and ends with the people who are at DOT. And I think that putting them front and center, asking them what's not working and what they'd like to fix, and then setting those as metrics is a key definition of success for me. The department is also embarking on a strategic plan, which I hope we can release around Labor Day. And that will set benchmarks for us in terms of how we can reduce crashes, how we can deliver on the Mayor's Great Streets Initiative, and how we can continue to do things like make good on the investment that we've already made in ATSAK, so that L.A. continues to be in the forefront of sort of national and international best practices. Here, I'll say a few words about how we've been able to accomplish those vision Here, I'll say a few words about how we've been able to accomplish those Vision Zero projects in San Francisco. You know, we really use, we looked around and we used what we had in our shops. So, we happen to have some red paint lying around because we're painting our transit-only lanes red. We had some plastic bollards lying around, which cost about $100 each. Public Works had some planters lying around their shops, and we looked in our pantry and pulled what we had and created a temporary curb extension, which has reduced crashes and conflicts at a couple of our worst intersections. So, these are really placeholders that set the stage for the eventual capital investment. So, when I mentioned partnerships earlier, you know, those are essential. Partnering with the street resurfacing folks, partnering with the Department of Public Health that has access to funding sources that we don't typically see in transportation, and partnering with the private sector. So, we partnered with the private sector on a couple of projects that we worked on in San Francisco, and they were tremendously successful. So, I would say, you know, being as scrappy as possible, getting out with what we've got in our pantry, and finding as many partners as will have me are the ways that I hope to sort of continue to get things out on the street. And I hope that, you know, as we work together and sort of think about what's in the strategic plan, we'll all have a shared understanding of what we think success looks like in the first year.
Great, thank you very much. And Mr. Bonin to close.
Thank you, colleagues. Before we move forward on the confirmation, I wanted to say a word about John Kirk-Muckery. Where's Mr. Muckery? He was, there we go. John, I want to thank you for your service to the department over the past few months. You stepped in at a time of tumult in the department, and you helped steady the ship and restore morale and get us back on the right track. As I said in committee the other day, there are a handful of utility players that the city has had over the years, Sharon Morris and Rita Robinson and you, men and women for all seasons. And we're lucky to have you here in the city because you can pretty much be plugged in and do anything at any time. And so, I want to thank you for your service. I want to welcome Salita to the city. You've got some big shoes to fill and a big mission here in the city of Los Angeles. We're willing to work closely with you in partnership and get LA moving again. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. With no other speakers on the queue, we'll open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Welcome, congratulations.
Thank you.
We'll go ahead and take item 64. I believe Mr. Parks's question's been asked and answered. He's good. So, with that, we'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Excellent, thank you very much. We're going to go.
Fourth with please. Item 30, fourth with please.
Item 30?
Yes.
Fourth with. Just so everybody knows, it was announced earlier, we'll announce it again, every item today because of the recess will be sent forthwith, but we'll make sure to note that there was a special request to put that forthwith as well.
Disregard.
No problem. With that, we'll go ahead and take item eight next for cards. Lon Peters.
Good morning, President Englander, members of the council. My name is Lon Peters. I'm the Integrated Resources Planning Administrator at Glendale Water and Power. I ask you to table this ordinance because the process used by LADWP to impose these rate changes has been utterly and uniquely opaque. For example, we recently found out through a Public Records Act request that on December 30th, the department increased the proposed rate for basic transmission service by 6% without telling us. No notice means no process. This is not the way a public agency should conduct business. Although we do not currently use this service, Glendale depends on LA's transmission system to get our, to get electricity to our residents and businesses, and we expect to ask for additional transmission service from LA in the future. Contrary to what you may have heard, the department has not given us the documentation for the rates that we've requested. In over three decades of experience in the industry and well over a dozen rate cases, I've never seen a situation in which a utility simply refuses to share computer models and data that's requested. Thus, we have no idea if the proposed rates are reasonable. The department's practices are also discriminatory. On today's agenda are ordinances for the purchase of solar energy under long-term contract. Los Angeles will use its transmission network to deliver this solar power to its residents for decades. Also on today's agenda is a 10-year sale of transmission capacity to Pasadena. Glendale can only get transmission for three years. The proposed rates would also force us to pay for Los Angeles transmission facilities that we would be prohibited from using. This discrimination against Glendale is clear, pervasive, and contrary to national energy policy. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Herman.
Angelinos, and all you listening in, you heard, promise of solar power, discrimination upon discrimination, and I'm going to hold my time to this one minute, to share with those taxpayers. The Department of Water and Power has continued to refuse to produce the information upon the request of the public. We demand transparency for our children, our youth, and all us Angelinos who pay high power taxes for your convenience, for your control, and your abuse and misuse. Batman speaks on behalf of all Angelinos. Why no transparency with the DWP to step up the game after Glenn Date was appointed to do something about it with Mr. Garcetti? Handle the issue, take the criticism, and bring back transparency.
Okay, with that, seeing no speakers on the queue, we'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Let's go ahead and go to item 56. Rose Marie. Followed by Carlos Kilstas? Read the writing, I apologize. Followed by Lynn C. or Sal. Welcome.
Hi, just a quick clarifying question. For Mr. Carlos, he needs translation.
We'll take care of that.
Okay, just making sure, thank you. Good morning, council members. My name is Rose Marie Molina, and I'm the Strategic Director of the Clean Car Wash Campaign, and I'm here today representing the Los Angeles Coalition to End Wage Theft. In the past five years, over 12 organizations, many of them worker centers, have been working together with Endulon and the UCLA Labor Center to find solutions to the wage theft epidemic occurring today in Los Angeles that's affecting our workers and their families. Every week in LA, $26 million is stolen from workers by bad employers. That's $1.4 billion a year. It's a lot of money. We're happy today to stand behind council as they move towards a common sense solution to this problem. It's unacceptable that today in Los Angeles, there are workers who aren't even considered low-wage, they're considered no-wage workers, and I'm talking about car wash workers who are earning tips only for as many as 12 hours of work a day. The system is broken, and it's time to support policy that will put money back into the pockets of workers, families, and the City of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Buenos dias, mi nombre es Carlos Cuestas. Good morning, my name is Carlos Cuestas. I worked for eight years at the car wash, Hollywood Car Wash. The working conditions in that company were terrible. I worked for 11 hours and they only paid me $35. And it is not fair that these companies exploit the workers. Now, today, you know, the workers are, the workers at car washes are working so hard. I worked for a total of eight years, and I suffered discrimination. I was a victim of theft, robbery, and abuses. So, we come here to urge your support because I don't think it's very, it's fair, not only for the car wash industry, but all the industries. It is not fair that discrimination that we are living. We deserve respect and dignity, thank you.
Hi, my name is Lynn C. I'm a server at a local restaurant. I've been working there for four years and in the industry for a total of nine years. Due to abhorrent conditions, I and 18 of my prior and current coworkers have filed wage claims and sent a letter to management. We hope to improve our working environment and receive compensation for wage theft derived from working off the clock, tip gouging, and lack of breaks. As a result of us filing this claim, our employer has taken retaliatory actions against us by interrogating some employees on a one-on-one basis, cutting hours, issuing threats, firing employees, and even filing a harassment suit against a now-former employee. We began meeting in December of last year, but we did not file until March of this year because it took a long time to discuss and decide what steps we wanted to take. Management found out and fired some employees before we were able to file. Were there change in policy regarding employer retaliation? We would have been protected from day one. However, current law only protects workers after they file a wage claim. This leaves them vulnerable until they are prepared to take official action, in our case, from December through March. The new wage theft law would protect workers as soon as they talk to a community organization about filing a wage claim. So, for us, we would have been protected at the beginning of our discussions in December.
Is it Tia Kuntz?
That's right. Good morning, council members. My name's Tia Kuntz, and I am here to testify as the Legal and Policy Research Director at the UCLA Labor Center about our state's broken enforcement mechanisms for the most basic labor protection. So, I'm talking about minimum wage, overtime, the right to take meal and rest breaks. I know things, and if I could just have your attention for two seconds, you will too, very soon. So, the system is failing all Californians. Angelinos are disproportionately impacted, and I'm talking about the most vulnerable of Angelinos who are the most disproportionately impacted. We're special here in LA. We have 750,000 low-wage workers in Los Angeles, more than any other city. We have more restaurant workers, more garment workers, more day laborers, more car wash workers than any other city. By now, many of you are familiar with the report my office put out four years ago that cites the most dramatic statistics that we'd seen about many workers and their experience with wage theft. The report is cited in the motion that you all are voting on today that you saw back in 2009, so I won't belabor the statistics, but suffice it to say that Los Angelinos experience more wage theft than any other city in the country. Our average here in Los Angeles is 80% of Angelinos experience the most basic violations. The national average is just 68%. But what I'm here to talk to you about is enforcement. So, know this, that between 2008 and 2011, more than 15,000 Angelinos filed claims for unpaid wages at our state's Labor Commissioner Office for LA right over on Fourth and Hill. They waited an average of 500 days for a hearing. The vast majority of them won that hearing. They were awarded in total over $32 million in unpaid wages. And guess how much they collected? Just 13% of that $32 million, our state's Labor Commissioner found they were owed. This data can't be manipulated, it can't be misinterpreted. We're failing Angelinos, and we can do better. We know we can do better by looking at data for local enforcement numbers in San Francisco, where workers are able to recover 95% of back wages owed due to a local enforcement.
Thank you, thank you very much. Ms. Ramirez.
Yeah, let's draft a wage theft ordinance. A perfect example would be the West Los Angeles Police Department and Rampart Police Department corrupted rentacops who have robbed us, the law-abiding American taxpayers, in their wages by not legally performing their job duties of enforcing the rule of law, that is keeping public safety and investigating all crimes and suspects, which they don't do because they are too busy politically pandering pussies and aiding and abetting all the wetbacks and the violent Latino chango gangbangers. Hence, it's outright wage theft. And the UCLA Big Enchiladas should be sanctioned and arrested for they have hired all wetbacks and gangbangers to construction companies or to do constructions behind the Jewelstein Eye Center and over glutton with these illegal felons throughout the university campus and the medical center, while we have so many homeless and impoverished military veterans and pilots who are in furlough. UCLA has contributed in wage theft by unlawfully hiring these criminal felons who are committing crimes against tenants, residents, business merchants, students. Yes, we are tracking, we are the tracking enforcement because if we leave it up to these un-American and corrupted, disingenuous council members, Mike Bonin and Gil Sadio, we're in big trouble. And Corretts, I'm really shocked.
You can, you need to address the body as a whole.
So, again, again, the middle-class American citizens are being put on the streets because of wage theft. That includes city employees. They're being, again, the middle class is being obliterated and being robbed of these services that they are entitled to as law-abiding American citizens. So, again, stop hiring cheap labor, hire American citizens like the military. God bless America.
Always lovely to hear you speak. And just so the folks know that our public comment speakers under the freedom of speech get away with more than perhaps morally they should. So, with that, we do have, no more cards on this item. Mr. Corretts.
Thank you, Mr. President. I thought particularly after that, I should clarify what this issue deals with, especially since Los Angeles is possibly the wage theft capital of the whole country. Wage theft exists where employees are illegally not paid overtime, where employees are illegally not paid a minimum wage. Sometimes in situations where they are paid properly, but then they work additionally off the clock. So, a hotel that tells its workers that even though they typically could do 14 rooms in terms of the house cleaning during an eight-hour period, they're told you have to do 16. If you don't finish 16, you do the rest off the clock. And worst of all, we have employers that will not pay their employees for a week or two or three and then say, "I'm not going to pay you at all. Try to get the money from me." And even when they go through the court system, which is difficult, and they win, very little of that money is actually collected. So, this is a disastrous situation, and there are some industries where this is their business model, like the janitorial industry. An office building will pay a contractor less than the amount it would take to actually pay their workers minimum wage. So, there's no chance they can pay minimum wage. And we heard about this in Sacramento where the people who were paying an honest wage banded together and asked us to enforce against the more than 50% of contractors that were paying less than a minimum wage. This gives a completely unfair business advantage to those who cheat their workers out of some or all of their wages. And this is something we absolutely have to take on. This is a renewal of an original motion which ran out of time. I believe it's critical that we revive this effort. This time, we make it happen. We protect not only those who are the lowest-earning workers among us, but we also protect our economy because those wages go right into the economy in payment for critical goods and services that they otherwise can barely afford. So, I ask for your aye vote to continue this motion forward and to take on an issue which is crying out to be addressed after many, many years of negligence.
Mr. Parks.
Thank you. Certainly support the motion, but I was bringing up a side issue. The last time we had a motion that had expired, we did a verbal motion from the chair, and everybody agreed and voted on it, that we asked the city clerk to notify the concerned council office before. council office before they cancel out an existing motion, so they have an opportunity to re-initiate it if they choose. So I know that was a motion a while back that actually put this in place, but we asked that each council office gets notified before a motion basically is eliminated. So I'd like to renew that motion that we voted on several months ago and see if we can get the city clerk to do that for us.
So that item is now before us. We'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
That passes. Thank you so much. Item... Okay, item forty. We've got cards for item forty. Wilma Vega, followed by Halima Il. I'm sorry. You can wait for a minute, till we'll go through the comic cards first. Okay, go ahead.
Great. Good morning, council members. I'd like to thank you for each of your service to this great city. We are spokespeople for the parents of the Watts Towers Arts Center Campus. My name is Wilma Fraser Vega. I am a mother of a fourteen-year-old attending the campus.
And my name is Halima Il, and I'm a mother of five children that attend the campus.
As parents, we've placed expectations on our children to complete their schooling for each sector. And this leads into our concern about the nomination of Ms. Danielle Brazile. As per an article in The Times, she said with a laugh that although she completed her senior year at Grover Cleveland High School, she was short a few credits that she never made up. She thus would become a rare city department head who lacks a high school diploma. As parents, we are very concerned about this. We are asking for an exemplary person who meets our expectations of parents. That's our reasons for sending our kids to school, making sure that they complete each sector of their education.
We represent thirty parents, and we'd like to know, is there any other qualified candidate who can and will lead the expectations of the parents of the Watts Tower Arts Center Campus? We also request to withdraw the candidate, Ms. Danielle Brazile.
And we also ask the mayor, the councilman, Busciano, to stand up for education in Watts and be examples for our children. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Herman.
One minute. It's obvious we have communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Ms. Danielle Brazile. However, Ms. Brazile, just based on the information of my discovery here, where you know that you do not have kiddie porn, and you will do an excellent job for the Department of Cultural Affairs, however, the Cultural Affairs has programs, activities, and services for the public, and I'm sure you're going to have public interest at every expense and all expense as you listen in to Batman say that we need activities and programs for the public to enjoy the arts, not the chinchero of graffiti and violation of vandalism graffiti throughout our communities. So I say to you, Mayor Garcia, hopefully you picked the right person. Boyle Heights, Lincoln Heights, El Surino, Iguacu will not look like the chinchero like Ms. Martinez's area in the valley. So, ooh rah! Go USA Soccer!
Okay, Mr. O'Farrell.
President, thank you. Colleagues, I would like to invite to the table appointee Danielle Brazile. Danielle comes to us highly recommended, thoroughly vetted in this process, and well-known in the arts community and in many other circles across the city of Los Angeles by virtue of her forty, I'm sorry, twenty years of nonprofit work supporting arts education, culture, and arts in Los Angeles. Also, for the last eight years, she's helped build Arts for LA, took a struggling ad hoc committee and built it into a real advocacy organization, increasing its funding, increasing its influence across the city, and increasing its place as a necessary and critical voice to support arts across the city of Los Angeles. Danielle and I have had many conversations over the past year, and she understands very clearly that we cannot depend on our TOT taxes and other fees that we constantly work to fund arts programs in Los Angeles, and knows that working with our grants writers, both in the department and outside the department, to raise additional funds for arts and culture to make this a more robust organization and department of the city of Los Angeles is absolutely key and critical. I also want to give a shout-out while I'm standing here to acting general manager Matthew Rudnick, who I've worked with very closely over the past better part than a year now. Thank you, Matt, for your service. And also, I think Joe Smoke deserves a shout-out as well, who has been acting for a bit while Matthew's been on maternity leave. But this is a department that needs the talent and leadership that Danielle will provide. And I'm very excited to be poised to increase the profile visibility and ambitious goals we have for arts in Los Angeles to be worthy of the world-class designation that we deserve to be in cultural affairs and arts. So Danielle, I would love for you to say a little bit about yourself and your experience and your goals for the department. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember O'Farrell, and it's a pleasure to see each and every one of you today. I've seen you many times and have worked with you on several occasions, and many times as the outside advocate. And the mayor actually tapped the outside advocate for the inside role to head this department. And it took me some time to really give this consideration, because I can be very effective on the outside advocating for the arts and arts education. And I had the great pleasure of working with then-school board member Martinez when we passed the Historic Arts at the Core Resolution to ensure that arts education with the stroke of one pen was accessible to six hundred and fifty thousand students in LAUSD. And I did that because it was arts education that kept me in school. I did that because I believe that everyone, regardless of their zip code, regardless of their economic status, regardless of their immigration status, has a fundamental right to understand and to realize their own creative potential. I'm in the business of fostering human potential, and I do that through creativity. It's a passion. It's something that I believe in. And I believe it's a pathway out of poverty. I believe it's a pathway to workforce development. I believe it's a pathway to ensure that we have an engaged citizenry. So what I hope to bring to this department is that vision, that passion, and the real nimbleness that you need when you run a nonprofit, because we're operating in the interest of the public. And we have four million people in this city. We have over forty million residents in this city. And we know that there are some communities that don't have strong cultural infrastructure. And so one of the things that I'd really like to do is work with each and every one of you to ensure that arts and culture is seen as a major catalyzer in each community, that it's actually an indicator of the health of a community. What is the cultural expression of our neighborhoods, and how do we ensure that we have equitable access to that cultural representation in all of its diversity? It is really a pleasure to be here today with you and to work alongside you. And I welcome to entertain any questions that you may have.
Great, thank you very much. Mr. Price.
Thank you, Mr. President. Danielle, it is a pleasure to welcome you. We know of your commitment to the arts and to the community. But I hope you will take the opportunity while you're here to, after your confirmation, to maybe have a conversation with the citizens who I think raised some interesting questions about your background, and certainly we're a response. But, you know, there are lots of folks who talk about cultural tourism. And so interested to know what your definition of cultural tourism is, and expand a little bit more on your appreciation for the intersection between arts and economic development and how we really harness the creative energies and creative spirits to make our city better.
Thank you for that question, Councilmember Price.
All right, thank you.
Cultural tourism means different things to different people, right? It is about how do tourists come to Los Angeles and explore a cultural center. It could be as simple as that. It can also mean, how do we ourselves explore our own communities and communities that we may or may not have explored in the past? So the whole notion of cultural tourism is about cultural exchange. It's about understanding a place through a community's cultural lens and cultural vitality. The intersection of economic development in that frame is when you think about the actual dollars that are spent inside that community, whether it's to the cultural institution or to the parking garage, or when you go out to eat. These are all magnifiers that fuel the creative industry. We have forty million tourists coming from outside of Los Angeles, but we have such a huge city. That imagine if we integrate, and this is where I am so excited, to think about the role that transportation plays in connecting our communities through arts and culture and through cultural tourism, so that we have day trips and destination trips to Culver City, or to Watts, or to San Pedro, or to the San Fernando Valley, and that there's cultural destinations that help to connect our city through the fabric of our cultural identities. So that's, those are a couple of different things. And I would also say that we know that one in seven jobs is directly related to the creative industries here in Los Angeles. That is a powerful number. But we also know that not everyone has access to those creative industries. So how are we using creativity as workforce development to ensure that our creative industries are reflective of the populations in which we serve?
Great, thank you. Mr. Bonin, followed by Mr. Busciano, followed by Mr. Price.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for your willingness to serve the city of Los Angeles. It's, I'm looking forward to exciting and interesting things. About ten, twelve years ago, one of the most interesting and inspiring things I saw in Los Angeles in terms of public art was the Community of Angels exhibit, where in every corner of this city, there was a sculpture of an angel, all decorated and adorned differently, so that every person or every community had an opportunity to express something individual while also expressing how the city was unified. What is the chance of us doing something like that again? Maybe not angels, but something that unifies the city but also gives a voice?
Well, I think there's tremendous opportunities. And I think that that's one great example of how public art and creative placemaking helps to create individual identity and unifies the city. So the Angel exhibition was one of those. I have been following the Public Art ADF issue very closely, as a matter of fact, have also following it with the Controller's Office. So I think that there are some resources that we might be able to use to identify what that next thing is. We also used to have the LA Festival, which was on the heels of the Olympic Festival, which was a citywide festival that really celebrated creativity again in all of its diversity. And, you know, maybe that's another way that we can look at creative placemaking.
I love that idea. Would love to work with you on it. And if you want to do some tour of Los Angeles art spots on Metro, I am happy to join and help make things happen on that.
Fantastic. I look forward to it.
Thank you. Mr. Busciano.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let me say this. As Frank Sinatra said, "Out of the tree of life, I just pick me a plum." We have what before us here? Performing arts. Sorry, Tom's not here, so I gotta step in. Still, it's a real good bet, the best is yet to come. I can tell you, what you bring to this department is a new and improved energy that we've been thirsting for for decades. But let me share with you also, we also have financial challenges within your department.
Yes.
How do you plan on overcoming that one? Secondly, we have a number of community theaters that are owned by the city. For us down at the Warner Grand, we feel that it's being underutilized. And share with us what you plan on doing with, coming from the performing arts, what you plan on doing with these theaters that need some entertainment, because we're feeling that there's just underutilized. So give us your thoughts on that.
If you can add to that, possible funding for music singing lessons for council members, I'd like you.
No comment on that. I think that the funding situation is a symptom of a larger value issue. And I would like to bring public value back to our community centers and to this department. I think we've got some transparency issues that we need to work on. We need to be incredibly effective and efficient with the resources that we have. We need to be able to develop the partnerships so that we're not doing service duplication. I can tell you that I have been working alongside Los Angeles County Arts Commission for the past nine years, have great relationships with them. I also have great relationships with the funding community. But I also think that we need to invest in our human capital at these centers. I think there's a tremendous opportunity to really look at what are the skills and the resources that our existing staffing needs to have to empower them to make really strong decisions. We can do a lot with limited resources. We are, after all, the arts. But I think what we need to do is we need to, again, invest in our human capital, and then we need to really reposition these centers as centers of civic engagement and find a way to bring them back to the community in which they are in. And then I think link that also with the transportation, because it's part of the city fabric.
Thank you very much. And I did have Mr. Price on the board. I'm not sure if he had another question? Okay. Yeah, technically, Mr. Busciano's name is on there. He didn't speak, he sang, so I'm not sure if that falls under the council rules. Might have to amend. With him around, we may have to amend the rules. I'm going to put that down as he actually spoke. And then, so with that, we'll go ahead and give it over to Mr. O'Farrell to close.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think we bring the Warner Grand back to life by booking Joe Busciano for a six-week run. What do you think? Right. I'll work on the publicity for you. All right. Thank you. Thank you, colleagues. Thank you, Danielle, for stepping up to the plate and offering your ideas. We all look very forward to working with you. And I want to urge for a unanimous vote on this appointment so we can get busy and, you know, burnish our image as a world-class city for the arts. Thank you.
And having grown up in CD-12 and worked with you as well, you're a welcome addition. So with that, if we can open the roll, colleagues, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Congratulations. Fantastic. Thank you. Godspeed. Unanimous. All right. With that, we're going to go ahead and take several items for cards. First, Mr. Walsh, you have a card on forty-seven, forty-eight. First, Mr. Walsh, you have a card on 47, 48, 52, and 53, and you have four minutes left.
John Walsh, logging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or J. Walsh Confidential, and tweeting at Hollywood Dems. Number 47. Let's start with number 47. This concerns recycling and recovery. You're doing a fairly good job on, a good job on recycling. This concerned used oil, $1 million worth of used oil that you have to get rid of. You know, like we got rid of John Perez yesterday. Number 48, brownfields. This concerns, brownfields is pollution. And in fact, this is another excellent item with the EPA. And that's 30, that's 47, that's 48. 52 is, this is where you fall down. Miguel Leon Padron, April 7th, he was murdered. Now, we know this is the perfect crime. Snitches get stitches. No one, whether your father, your grandfather is the LAPD police chief, or whether it's somebody in Mexico, if the perfect crime is for a gangster to murder someone in cold blood in front of 100 witnesses, because nobody is going to talk. You found one, I challenged you, one fulfilled reward in the past seven years. Go back another three years, 10. One in 10 years, and that was under special circumstances. It's not going to happen. Number 53, this is Mothers in Action and Taste of Soul event. We should be giving them more money for Taste of Soul event, because some of these other festivities do not get the number of people that the Taste of Soul event gets. Last time I was there, there must have been a quarter, at least 200,000 people over the day. The Taste of Soul event is well-known throughout the entire United States. It makes, and the black communities all over the United States, they look to our Taste of Soul event. It is something we could all be proud of. Of course, most white people are afraid to go into black neighborhoods. But you know what? I've got the courage, because as you know, on the previous life, I was black. This white skin is a demotion in this life. I wasn't a good enough black last time. HollywoodHighlands.org. And the last item is item 53, 52, 53. I don't need one, I don't need all the rest of the time. HollywoodHighlands.org. Stay tuned for public comment.
Harmon, items 53, 57, and 58. Three minutes left on the clock.
Angelinos, all you residents and taxpayers, we know that Jose Wezar and Mr. Fuentes on item 57 are installing street banners identifying the Eagle Rock Neighborhood Council. Big deal. Item 58 now, buffer barriers for the relative to funding to perform beautification projects within the Council of District 14. Now, what in the world does Mr. Busciano in Long Beach have to do with District 14 of Jose Wezar? An I, your constituent, in CD 14 for how many years and put up and tolerate with this nonsense for funding to perform a beautification project, when you don't even bother to repair, fix our streets? As the public pointed out, we want things fixed. And we don't want them fixed later. Batman wants them fixed now. Batman demands for the public, for you to take interest, for the taxpayers. Right, Mr. Corretts? It's funny, huh? That we trip and slip.
We don't address particular members under the rules.
That Wezar Busciano signed up to transfer $55,000 to the Central Los Angeles Recycling Transfer Station Community Amenities Trust Fund for the salaries, for the general, what service? It's to perform a beautification? Make any, any technical corrections and clarifications as necessary for the above instructions? Effectuate the intent of this motion? How dare you? Beautification projects should be within all of you. And beautification should be more so in the areas of the minorities who are constantly suppressed by your action not to beautify the projects that you left behind unfinished. Unfinished projects, gentlemen. And Batman's aware of that. And all the children that left, that you discriminate against and take away beautification projects. Yeah, Mr. Fuentes, you don't have to shake your head. It's a fact. And I'm right. Otherwise, Mr. Corretts would cross his hands and pray for you. But I'm going to stick to topic. These are buffer barriers. These are violations for access to beautification projects. And we have determined that you have discriminated against people with ADA issues. You've violated our rights under Title I and Title II. Fix our sidewalks, fix our streets, and take action.
And now, some deeper thoughts by Donna Perman. Items 52 and 55. Three minutes, please.
Okay. On 52, I want to say that we need to, we need to take care of the problem of the murders. We need, we need to have the death penalty. If we utilize the death penalty correctly, we wouldn't have so, have to have so many rewards, because we wouldn't have so many murders. Because these people already went and taken care of. And we need also be able to protect ourselves. If the murderers thought that we'd been able to protect ourselves, that we were armed, then they wouldn't be so likely to be able to go over there and murder people. So that's the way to do it. Let's protect ourselves. And number 55, actually, I want to say the same for number 53. I am sure that many people would donate to NAACP for the 24th Annual Theater Awards. And I'm sure there's plenty of people that would donate also to the Soul, Taste of Soul. Because a lot of people would donate, and they're tax write-offs. And many stars, movie stars, and people in sports could be able to give to these items. These are not bad items. I just think that they could be donated privately or with stars. They get recognition. And maybe politicians, they can give to these things specifically, so they can say, you know, this one gave to the Taste of Soul, and then people would want to reelect them. So I think there's a lot of areas more that we could, we could have these things paid for. And, and if we reopen Benny Hines Video Conferencing, then people could come down and hear it there. So let's find other ways, more creative ways, to pay, to donate, to get money for these items that are special events, rather than just sticking to the city, who may not even be going to these events. As I said, last of all, let's protect ourselves and let's stop the murders from happening. Then we won't have to have these awards. Wouldn't it be much better to have living, breathing people than having to have rewards for people who have been killed? Thank you.
All right. Antonia, your last card. Two minutes.
What numbers? You said 20 and...
No. 55.
Only one? You just said 20. 20 and 55?
Your clock's running. You're on 55.
Yes. Please apportion $60,000 to the Los Angeles Coliseum Fourth of July Fireworks Show. Let us honor our American democratic sovereignty by celebrating our American independence. And this came at the terrible price for freedom is not free. It came from the bloodbath of our dear and beloved United States military warriors. Many never made it back home to kiss this country's ground. And those who came back are fragmented and tormented. Let us extend our hands out to them and honor and salute them with every ounce of our being. To the United States military, we love you. To the United States Coast Guard, we love you. God bless the United States Air Force. God bless the United States Army. God bless the United States Navy. God bless the United States Navy SEALs. God bless the United States Marine Corps. God bless the United States Top Gun. God bless the United States Reconnaissance Unit. God bless the United States Top brass Pentagon officials.
Mr. President, it doesn't appear that she's talking about 55. Yeah, this is not on topic.
I'm sorry? What?
This is not on topic.
It's number 20. It's on topic. I'd like to recommend taking chance.
You weren't on item 20, so your time is up. That was your last warning. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry. You denied me the right to speak again. I mean, not only do you kick me out of every public meeting, but also committing me.
Now you're disrupting the meeting.
Now what can I do to stop getting censored by you?
I've said to stay on topic. I told you which item you were on. We're not going to have the argument. Sergeant, please, thank you.
Only one item.
Okay, we're going to go ahead. Now you're disrupting the meeting. I'm going to ask, one more outburst, we'll ask you to leave the chambers. Okay, now I'm asking you to leave the chambers. Thank you, ma'am. Okay.
For the record, she's still yelling.
You're still yelling and disrupting the meeting? You know, I've asked you to leave, actually, the meeting. You've been yelling. We've got to stop working now, because you continue to disrupt this meeting. So we're halting the meeting until...
And just to make the record clear, she was advised and admonished a few times for being off-topic. She argued and was continuing to make a disruption while in the audience portion.
Yeah, we'd like to note that. And thank you, Mr. City Attorney. With that, we've got items 47, 48, 52, 53, 57, 50, I'm sorry, 55, 57, and 58. Once again, 47, 48, 52, 53, 55, 57, and 58 are before us. Seeing no speakers on the queue, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Okay, and then we'll go ahead and take item one for cards. Christopher Bondurant, Bondurant, thank you for your patience today as well. Appreciate that.
Your Honorable Mayor Garcetti, the Honorable President, and the Honorable Members of the LA City Council. This matter has come before you on the third time. And very quickly, I'd like to point to the letter brief that was submitted on this matter on May 24th of 2014. This encompasses a case where a city tree branch smashed into the bedroom window of an elderly, disabled, blind senior. And the follow-up was that...
Excuse me. I don't want to cut you off, and you can continue your, I'm going to hold your time for a minute.
Okay.
I've been notified that it was received and filed, but we can correct that if that's not the case. But Council District Office said that they'll, the council office will meet you at the side of the ropes if you wanted to talk to them, and they can fill you in on the, the status.
I'm sorry?
The council office will meet you at the side of the ropes, and they can talk to you about the status of it?
Yes.
But it was my understanding that it was actually already received and filed, that the fine and fee was dismissed. But they'll go ahead and they're looking that up to verify it, and they'll meet you at the side if you'd like to speak with them.
Thank you. There was one other issue.
Sure.
And I thank you for that.
Okay.
If I'm understanding that the fine and fees are dismissed and, and that it was received. There, there are four overgrown 30-foot-plus-high trees out in front of our home, my mom's home. One of those branches, their tree, city trees, fell into, slammed into her window, broke the window. This is posing a continued public and private safety hazard, and we've been asking for over 30 years if those trees be removed.
So they'll be happy to talk to you about that specific item as well?
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you for your time.
Okay. No, thank you. Thanks for your patience in sitting through this. We've had a couple disruptions in the meeting and had to pause and wait, so I appreciate you waiting.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, oh, Mr. Parks.
On item 1C, although that's, I believe, received and filed because the owner is a self-occupied building, we've worked out an agreement with Building and Safety to remove the $203.59 interest payment. So the only remaining fee would be $398. And we're asking that we alter that amount and also that the person be given a six-month period to pay it off.
And do we need a second on that? Or is that already submitted?
Second.
Second? Okay, second by Mr. Price. With that, number one then will be before us. We'll open the roll and close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Okay, so that will now take us to general public comment. General public comment. Ernest Richardson.
Pardon me, Mr. President, our interim president. My name is Ernest Richardson. I live in LA and on Los Angeles, I mean, on Nicolet between Crenshaw and La Brea. But it's my understanding, am I supposed to have three minutes or two minutes here?
Two minutes.
Okay. But anyway, I'm appalled today, and I hope it's unpleasant for you, it's unpleasant for me. I've been watching this meeting, and I see council members, when people are speaking, taking pictures, walking away, talking, and doing various other things and not listening to what these people are saying. And these are the citizens that come in here every, for meetings, and I think they demand some kind of respect from you guys. And I can't see how this can be, I mean, the district place every day where people come here to speak, and the council, like, it just breaks up, and people taking pictures on the side while people are speaking. Other people are walking in and out. But anyway, that's what you guys do, that's what you do. But I'm here today because I have two parking tickets. I got a parking ticket on the 17th of June and the 13th of June, both for the same ticket. And these tickets were given to me like at 6:00 in the morning and 3:00 in the morning. And where I live, the parking is impacted by, because of the density of the number of people that live here. And you can't see my, I got the, for me to receive this ticket, you have to get out the car and walk between cars to see that I didn't have a sticker. And I got the sticker, I mean, the ticket for, on the 13th and the 17th for the same, for the same thing, not displaying a sticker, and at 4:00 in the morning and 3:00 in the morning. Now, I don't know if they have a quota, or if there's someone doing something in particular, but the real issue here is not these two tickets. But I would like to take a minute to ask the city attorney, if, the city attorney, what's his name, Mr.? Okay, anyway, if you're aware of what the cost is if you pay a ticket late, a $68 parking ticket, and you pay it late, are you aware of what the cost?
You should take that up with the Department of Transportation.
I didn't ask you to take it up. I said, are you aware of the amount of money you have to pay for a late ticket? The cost is $185 or $87 for a $68 parking ticket. Now...
Sir, I'm sorry, your time, your time is up. But thank you so much for coming in. Appreciate that. Thank you. With that, before we go to any general public comment cards, I'm going to clear the rest of the agenda. We do have one item for reconsideration from last Friday's council meeting. That would be council file number 14-0598. And we'll open the roll for reconsideration of that particular item. And we'll open the roll for reconsideration of that particular item. 14-0598. It was an ordinance on a street lighting matter. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
And I believe that item is to be continued or reheard?
Yes, continue to August 6th.
Continue to August 6th. That'll be the order without objection. Great. And then we've got one item left. There's number 65 for Mr. Corian.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Members, item... I have a substitute motion that I'd like to propose. I'm sorry, an amending motion for item 65 after discussion with our Chair of the Public Safety Committee. I'd like to move that item 65 be amended to: 1. Instruct the fire department to defer civilianization to maintain staffing at the department for 1 fire captain 2, 1 fire captain 1, and 1 fire battalion chief in the LAFD's Homeland Security Grants Unit, 1 fire assistant chief in the LAFD's Fleet Services Division, and 1 fire battalion chief in the Public Information Unit for at least 90 days, pending a broader public dialogue about fire department reorganization and civilianization. 2. Instruct the CAO to make technical corrections necessary to implement the intent of the aforementioned instruction. And 3. Refer the original motion in CF and Council File 14-0857 to the council's Public Safety Committee for hearing after the conclusion of the council's pending recess.
Great. Looking for a second? Second by Mr. Abus Gaiano. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
All right, so now we'll go back to general public comment. Nikki Vandell. The rope should stay closed.
The rope should stay separate from us? Really? You know, in Hollywood, they do that. That's not right in this chamber, and I think you all know that.
We're going to ask applause to stay down, so no applauding the speakers.
No, we twinkle fingers.
Let them speak, please.
I don't even know what to say to you.
Ma'am, your clock is running, so it's up to you to speak.
I know my clock is running. Thank you. I'm from Palm Springs. You guys do a lot of stuff on consent agendas that don't allow the opportunity to thank you for taking up the Special Olympics. I believe we're going to be hosting a couple of the events. Number 36 also got addressed. I'm only in town occasionally, split time between here and there. We spend a lot of money teaching people how to kill people. That Homeland Security money that's coming in, we may want to say, "No, thank you." Because right now, we have a war in Kiev, where we train both sides of it so they can kill each other. And I know I have a lot of old friends in West Hollywood whose parents' children, brothers, sisters, cousins, uncles are in the crossfire. We don't need to have urban warfare here anymore. Global police state, stand down from this point forward. Thank you.
Deborah Saad. No longer here. John Walsh. Oh, Deborah? No? Okay.
My name is Debra Saad. YouTube 711 Star. Google my name for background and my story. The state of California and the city of LA are guilty. Requesting investigation of all issues regarding my illegal imprisonment, cruel and unusual punishment, failure to show compassion when extenuating circumstances existed, fraud of the court, city employment harassment, the abuse of power, malicious prosecution. All of this has been done to me. I have a double master's degree. I graduated cum laude. I'm not a joke, and I'm still going to say, "No justice, no peace." This is Civil Rights Day. I was beaten at the Long Beach City Conference by three police officers. I have a pacemaker now. I also have a torn rotator cuff. Make a joke out of me, but here's the claim form for the city of Los Angeles for having me go to court for six years and serve 30 days in jail. I want you to know that I have prima facie evidence to conclude that the city of Los Angeles is guilty of the following: violation of my civil rights, my right to travel freely. For six years, I was in court, therefore, I was unable to go visit my grandchildren. I was abandoned in the street when I was a child. I finished my master's degree, cum laude. My daughter has a bachelor's degree in computer engineering where she works for Hollenberg. I'm not somebody to laugh at. I'm not a joke. I retired with a red, white, and blue insurance card. That means I worked. I also have a degree that I worked as a United States Second Lieutenant in the New United States Army as a GS-11. Don't laugh at me, baby. I taught social studies, 7th and 8th grade, for nine years. Don't laugh at me, because when a lot of people were laying on their ass doing nothing, I was working. I've had 52 operations, and I'm still standing. And I will be fighting you, and you, and you, and you, and your mamas and your grandmothers if I have to, because I want justice. I'm demanding justice, and I'm still going to say, "No justice, no peace." And these are your claim forms for the city.
Thank you, ma'am. John Walsh.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org or JWalshConfidential tweeting @HollywoodDems. Mr. Labange hasn't been attended a meeting since last Friday. And where is he? Well, unfortunately, he suffers from a disease known as alcoholism. I would think his friends, and I'm not included in that, his friends up there would stage an AA intervention and get him on the right path. That's what he needs. That's... You all know that, but you're in denial because it would look bad on your right-wing, politically incorrect thing that he's an alcoholic, so therefore, there's something bad with that. Okay, another rape Sunday morning on Hollywood Boulevard. You're more likely to be raped on Hollywood Boulevard than any other street in LA. Of course, they're not... they're heterosexual rapes, so Mr. O'Farrell doesn't care. The first time a gay man is raped there, we'll hear a lot about it. And the crime, as you know, the Black Entertainment Awards, we had enormous crime wave in Hollywood. People were murdered. Frank Laiga called all gay people fruit. We... Apparently, it's now politically correct to call gay people fruit because no one has objected. We got an enormous victory. As you know, we fought for Betty Yee. She did well in LA. She won by more than 480 votes. But here's what's going to happen now. He is going to run for Weezer's seat, and that means Weezer leaves, and then you will have Betty Yee's opponent on the city council, Mr. Perez. And remember when I pointed to him? It was on the front page of the LA Times. Pointed him when he was sitting right there. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Mr. Barajas. If we can not applaud, please, thank you.
I handed copies to the protesters outside for Fix L.A., so when I get copies, I'm going to turn in. It's Wall Street or mankind, your choice. The other is Vulture Fund attack on Argentina. Shows British Empire's bail-in policy in full effect. Now, we're coming up on July 4th. Let us not forget our independence. The problem now, Argentina and the United States and the world faces what's called the bail-in, where depositors' money is stolen, literally stolen, by Wall Street vultures. The vulture funds that Argentina is battling against affects directly the decisions that we, as Americans, make if we do not impeach Obama, if we do not put in the Glass-Steagall Act, if we do not, as Americans, throw the powers-that-be, so-called, and actually put in our Constitution. We need a government. And what I can tell you right now is that if we do not, as Americans, throw ourselves into the fire, we will actually be burned with thermonuclear World War III. Russia, China, and other countries, a lot of them, 5-point-plus-billion people have sided with solidarity with Argentina. The Supreme Court does not operate in the function to which the Constitution authorizes every branch of government to do: defend the general welfare, the common defense. And more than that, we need to build a future. That is the prosperity power embedded in the preamble of the Constitution.
Donna.
It was great to see all those city employees, the ones that fix our streets. We... Our city employees are doing a great job. They're working real hard and conscientiously and should be treated with fairness. You care about businesses, but you don't care about our own city employees. Don't do... Don't cut back on their salaries. Don't change their benefits. All the employees of color, including Caucasians. You know, you care about city employees, but you give $30 million away to Wall Street. Many who live in the San Fernando Valley. The San Fernando Valley almost exceeded once. They can do it again when they finally realize that City Hall is not hearing or caring about them. You want to... You don't want to disenfranchise the San Fernando Valley. You can circumvent that by reopening Van Nuys video conferencing and then encouraging them to speak downtown, get heard, so you won't have to succeed. You have money to get to Wall Street and money to get Matt Down, but you don't have money to get to video conferencing. You have the money. You have the money for people to use that First Amendment right to speak in Van Nuys and San Pedro. Our citizens need to be able to arm ourselves. Don't need to have gun buybacks programs. Get back in haste and repent in leisure. But if you still want to give that gun, give it to the gun stores and get what it's worth. The gun won't be melted down, but it will help somebody who might need it. Guns do save lives, too. We have the ISIS to worry about, only a matter of time, and gang members to deal with, especially in parklets. You take away parking and good place for drug pushers and gang members to set up territory, not big enough for families and other people to relax and enjoy themselves. We need to fix our streets and sidewalks. And Garcetti apologized.
Thank you. Herman.
Angelenos, I don't have big ears, but I do listen. The Constitution of implicit criticism. How do we challenge this un-presidential abuse of local government? Power by our council administrators in violation of freedom of speech? By what, simple devices, barriers? Our freedom of speech, we deserve, and not this unreasonable abuse. Unreasonable abuse by the young woman Nikki, who made it very simple: silence. Fifth Amendment. Which all calls for universal rebuke. A mischievous brief public comment, limited time, is unreasonable, Mr. Big Ears. And the virtue of all of you to sit here and deny public comment, public speech, public speech, public speech. On what grounds? Public interest is a business, a business to deny the public. For we, the taxpayers, we demand public interest in all participations of this council. To the most conservative, would you agree with us? For we, the people, have spoken, not special interests, not lobbyists, not Jose Weezer, and not you, Mr. Bloomingfield, with your red tie and your cup of coffee. Sit down, please.
Again, you've got to only address the entire body.
Implicit criticism is a bitch, bitch, bitch. Explicit criticism. And I will not use the F-bomb or my big ears to talk to the other big ears that don't listen. This is a fact, Jack. Criticism by the public is a freedom of speech, our First Amendment right, and I'll go back to my introduction, Constitution of implicit criticism.
Thank you for sharing. So with that, we're going to go ahead and reconsider items 1A and 1B. So those items will be before us for reconsideration. If we can open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
And without objection, those will be continued for 30 days until July 29th. Okay, that'll be the order. That concludes general public comment and the agenda. Do we have motions for posting and referral? We'll go ahead and post and refer those items. Thank you very much. With that, do we have any announcements, colleagues? Announcements? Seeing none? Do we have any adjourning announcements? Are you going to do a duet? Do you have... Are these adjourning motions or announcements? No announcements? We have adjourning motions. Okay. So we're going to ask everybody, please rise, everybody in council chambers, please, rise for adjourning motions. And ask everybody to please rise for adjourning motions. Thank you so much. Mr. Fuentes.
Thank you, Mr. Englander. Reverend Dr. Mary Cecilia Broaddus passed away on June 19th. She was born on June 11th, 1952, in San Fernando, California. She... At the age of six, she joined Cavalry Baptist Church and was baptized by her father, the church's founder, Reverend Dr. Hillary T. Broaddus. She attended and graduated Pacoima Elementary, Pacoima Junior High School, and San Fernando High School. She also attended Los Angeles Valley College, transferred to Eastern Washington State University, where she received her degree. She completed a master's in communications from the University of Portland in Oregon, a master of divinity from the American Baptist Seminary of the West in Berkeley, and a doctor of ministry from the Oral Roberts University in Tulsa, Oklahoma. Shortly after her father passed, she moved back to California. There, she was a member of the Church on the Way in Van Nuys and Panorama Baptist Church, where she worked closely with Pastor John Polite. She later returned to Cavalry Baptist Church under the leadership of her brother and pastor Apostle William T. Broaddus. In 1988, she was licensed to preach the gospel and ordained in 1989 by the Cavalry Baptist Church of Pacoima. Her life was one that was dedicated to service, both as a professional and as a volunteer. She worked at the Juvenile Justice Connection Project and was a training coordinator with the Pasadena Mental Health Project. She served in many different capacities, including a missionary trip to Africa. And she is being celebrated, her life is being celebrated, over the last couple of days, and we want to adjourn in her memory. May she rest in peace.
Thank you very much. Others? Members? Mr. Steele.
Yes, it's a really sad day in Lincoln Heights, northeast Los Angeles today. It's a sad day in Dodger Town. Bobby Bobo Castillo, pitcher for the Dodgers in the '70s and '80s, the man who taught Fernando Valenzuela how to throw the screwball, just passed away from cancer. Bobby was a big star at Lincoln High School. He was born April 18th, 1955. He's a big character, very big personality. A guy you saw, kind of small guy with a big mustache. A great guy from the neighborhood, great guy that everybody was proud of. It was in the mid-'70s when he was playing semi-pro. He struck out Mike Brito with a screwball, and Mike Brito was impressed, so he signed him. And when he signed him, he sent him to the Mexican leagues, and down there, he met Fernando. And so he brought Bobby and Fernando to the Dodgers. They wanted... Al Campanaris wanted Fernando to have another pitch, and so Bobby taught him how to throw the screwball. And it's all history after that. Bobby played with... Bobby played with the Dodgers in the World Series. He had a modest record, but he was a Dodger. I mean, what a great story to grow up right in the shadows of Dodger Stadium, right there on Broadway and Lincoln High School, and then get to play for the Dodgers. He was traded to the Twins, and he hated it. You know, he went and played a couple of years, and he came back and finished his career with the Dodgers. And I got to meet him and know him a lot more in recent years, working with the Northeast Little League. And he's just part of the Dodger family. The Dodgers have community service players, and he was one of them. And he's just a great, great guy. And just really sad. I took the calls yesterday. Everybody's just sad to Bobby's not going to be around in the neighborhood anymore. But he was a great Dodger, great contributions, and may he rest in peace.
Great angelino. Mr. Busciano? Seeing no other adjourning motions, we are adjourned. Be safe.